Just prior to Sun Valley. We live north of Van Dale and it's coming south. That should be flashing. When flashing, uh, if it's not, there are 35. So just a concern.
Wait for that, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that can make a comment? I thought you had somebody else come up.
I understand, I mean, I was working at Sunset Side, but Sunset Side is my house. And I absolutely appreciate her comments because I will tell you that that is something that has been studied a lot in our school world about the importance of those flashers. But the thing you need to know is not having them set up so that they are happening during the school year, so that they're happening on weekends, because if they're always flashing, which we have actually, the one in town, then people quit ignoring them. So if we could give them what they're on when they're supposed to be on and off when they should be off, that would be fabulous. And whenever I brought it in my school world, I was like, oh, this is huge. And then a community member brought it up. And then, next two or minutes, I just want to tell you, I am excited, our school board has moved our meeting to a sister city, so that those of us that want to attend your City Council meetings and here and supporting them, we can. And the way I wanted to support you was to say, I thought it was amazing when we had the, um, community people from El Salvador, right, come and visit and want to be a sister city, and I thought that was fabulous. Um, especially to know what community members actually have somewhere down there that we didn't even realize. That was good, and I'm happy that we're going to be supporting that. Thank you very much, Whitey, just the...
Stevens, 328 Ranger Avenue. Uh, I, you know, that's a really good idea, I didn't think about that, that she just brought up regarding the flashing yellow lights. And I'd like to propose that we put one up there that I know, at least on our street, that says, please reduce your speed from 60 down to 25. And, uh, and then we also, we, we do have constant flashes evidently downtown, this is our one of our business people, and he has probably people exposing their parts, body parts downtown in front of his business, and, uh, punching holes in their gas tanks, and, uh, he gets them on video, and then, uh, for what, I'm not sure what the reason is, but they say, you know, they can't do anything about it. And I, I think these are some things that, that we really need to figure out a way around these. Uh, I know for this particular industry, I think it's seriously, but close enough as business, it's one of the best businesses in town. So this is happening with other people, and all that, uh, fellow friends of Blue Moon, uh, feeling the same way, and certainly understandable, I don't know what the issue is, is how the people, or what it says to the folks out there at the Eagles, but I'm sure that, that they're probably having a tough time getting people to come out there too. A lot of the karaoke singers out there lost their voice over it. So, uh, at any rate, whatever we can do, our iWatch group, uh, wants to be able to support as much as possible. I, we go around and hand out placards to people in the community, try to get donations from them, uh, have them, put them up in their windows, and I will tell you that everybody that I'm talking to, uh, is, is very interested, they want help, they want to be a part of the community. Again, whatever we do to support this, uh, you know, let us know. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, next item on the agenda. Uh, before we get started on the consent agenda, I do want to add one item, I'll see on the active agenda, uh, without objection, and that is commercial real estate purchase and sale agreement. No objection, all right, that will be added as I'll see. Consent agenda, payroll vouchers, approved payroll voucher numbers 119145 through 119157, and wire transfers as listed for $482,786.88 for the period ending on August 10, 2022. Plane vouchers, approved plane vouchers numbered 104222 through 104271, and wire transfers as listed for $123,563.88 for the period ending on August 10, 2022. Approved plane voucher number 104272 through 104273, and wire transfers as listed for $523.52 for the period ending on August 16, 2022. Item three, approved plane voucher number 104274 through 104341, and wire transfers as listed for $375,059.42 for the period ending on August 18, 2022. Council members, any items that you would like to remove from the consent agenda? None, what is the desire council on this item?
Move to approve the consent agenda, I'll second.
Motion by Council Bealer, second by Council Hicks to approve the consent agenda as presented, debate on this item? Okay, Sam, I'm just gonna take the motion, it's that way it wasn't Jack and Viddy. Very good, okay, go down the list, I would you would please, now, quick. Very good, okay, go down the list, I would you would please, now, quick.
Council Ripley? Mayor Borson?
Yes.
Council Beeler?
Yes.
Council Hicks?
Yes.
Council Farmer?
Yes.
Council Hart?
Yes.
Council Beeler, sir. Council Ripley, are you able to unmute yourself? I think she's on here, but Mayor, there's five years left.
The chair, the motion carries. Active agenda, opioid distributors settlement. Consider authorizing the city manager to sign the distributors' participation agreement and allocation agreement, that'll city manager.
I'm actually, I transfer to attorney.
All right, so this is the opioid settlement agreement. Question is, what this is, is an agreement which allows, uh, distribution for the state settlement, the state attorney. Uh, the actual amount is set forth in your packet of information as distribution goes for the state as well as Sunset individually. The allocation of the funds that Sunset receives has to go to opioid treatments. There's a variety of ways to do that, as such as the city. There's no sunset provision in this as far as one of these. Actually, although I'm assuming. By approving it, the city will have control of those funds when the distribution occurs, I believe it starts next year, so that's a seven-year setup process.
Any questions?
It took a long time to go through all the pages, though. The lengthiest one I've seen, but it all made sense.
It was a long read, for sure.
And, and again, the money is to be distributed through opioid, uh, treatment-type, uh, facilities or centers or programs?
Well, no, it's a matter of itself, I mean, yes, uh, if you use four, which is a particular situation, that's where it is, that's like opioid treatments. There's a variety of ways of doing it, the example I hear about too is a lot of counties are using it, and just, uh, unique to, uh, municipalities, so it's for county provisions as well. I think Yakima's saying of a therapeutic drug court, for instance. Those options are available, as long as you can allocate for opioid treatment.
Questions?
I did want to clarify this as attorney. Sorry.
All right, what is the desire council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Council Hart, second by Council Beeler to authorize city manager to decide distributors' participation agreement and allocation agreements. Debate on this item? Excuse me, some city court, be able to list one vote, please.
Mayor Borson?
Yes.
Council Beeler?
Yes.
Council Hicks?
Yes.
Council Farmer?
Yes.
Council Hart?
Yes.
Council Ripley? I see you're still muted, um, Mayor, you have five CS votes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item B, Yakima Bell, the conference of governments, technical assistance contract agreement. Consider authorizing the city manager to sign an amendment to the YBCOG contract, increasing the total amount to $23,740, that's city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, um, we have had Trevor Ford a month, a little over month, two months, almost two months, time has flown. Um, more and more as he goes through, um, city records, we're finding mistakes from previous, uh, people in the planning department. So he has not only been tackling the new responsibilities, but to his job, he has also been doing a lot of cleanup. Um, we found several, um, annexations that weren't finished, um, we have one property that was half inside the city limits and half outside the city limits, went through council but was never actually filed paperwork for this. So it seems like he's taking one step forward and three steps back every week. So we'd like to continue to have YBCOG for the distance of the planning department for the rest of the year. We think that $10,000 should get us through to the end of the year, and that will assist Trevor in doing his job to complete all of these fixes that need to happen.
Members, any questions?
Well, inasmuch as the YBCOG, that's part, big piece of what they do for the government, um, I, I think this is perfectly legitimate use of funds to take care of that. We know that you're going to, and you may find many more, who knows? So, let's hope not. But I, I'm certainly in favor of, of supporting this measure.
Other comments? Like my colleague Ms. Hart, I also agree, I think that, um, you walked into this position not knowing exactly what you would buy, which you will with most jobs that you take on, but, uh, there were some discrepancies and problems that needed to be solved, and I appreciate exactly that. Um, it does make your job bigger than you anticipated, so we, again, we get a little bit of help, I think is a good idea. Um, in the overall scheme of things, the additional $10,000 is not that much, in my opinion, so I think that's a good thing. All right, what is the desire council on this item?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we've got eight, two by Council Hicks, second by Council Beeler to authorize city manager to sign an amendment to the YBCOG contract, increasing the total amount to $23,740. That's city court, be able to list one vote.
Council Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Borson?
Yes.
Council Beeler?
Yes.
Council Hicks?
Yes.
Council Farmer?
Yes.
Council Hart?
Yes.
Mayor, you have six CS votes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item C, real estate, commercial investment, real estate purchase and sale agreement, that's city manager.
So as Councilman Lehrer during our last discussion, I discussed the possible purchase of what used to be Tucker Sellers at 70 Gray Road. Um, the advantage of the city purchasing this property is for the well. Um, our Sunnyview Park does not have access to potable water, and we have been buying water from Tucker Sellers for years. When he sold the property to, um, Mr. Aguilar, or Mr. Mr. Aguilar, they used a two-year agreement to continue to be connected to the water, and we're in our third year. For us to drill a well and do what we need to do for Sunnyview Park, probably ballpark about a million dollars. We're able to purchase this property, which in it turns purchases the well, and then all of the buildings and the properties that's with it for $500,000. So it is a, a good deal for the city, um, the owners have accepted, and what I'm asking you tonight is to allow me to sign a commercial and investment real estate purchase and sale agreement. We have the $10,000 earnest money ready to be turned over if you agree. And, um, the future plan for this would be, um, a substation for a fire department, and what that would do is it would make not only Sunset Fire Rating a better position, but it would also help Grand View, um, because they would get a one-for-one, and so we've, we're in discussion with Grand View about how we can make this a multi-jurisdictional use. Uh, we probably won't go super fast on this, we, it's the tenant that is in there, and we're gonna agree to let the tenant get some time to figure out what they need to do. So at this point, we just want to make sure that we purchase this property, and then there will be annexation later and a zoning change, but right now, this is really in the best interest of the city of Sunset.
Do you have city manager comments or questions on this item?
It's gonna save the city in the future, and it's gonna help everybody's insurance on just the fire protection part of it. Or places, we're actually looking into the future.
I would agree with, uh, Councilman Beeler, that this is, we've been needing to, to figure out some different water situation at the Sunnyview Park, and with the addition of having a, a, the possibility of having a substation out there for our firemen, I think is a good thing in the future, again, as we're growing, uh, and the annexation out in that direction. Uh, so I, I, I stand in favor of, of this purchase.
I tend to agree with that as well, I am a big fan of thinking into the future, planning decades even into the future, so that we can be ready when things do happen. Um, all signs point to this area continuing to grow, and I think we need to be prepared for that, I think we need to think long-term. This will help not only us to Grand View, um, obviously the well will probably need improvements somewhere down the line, probably in the near future than, than way down, but still, to be able to purchase that property, including the well, for $500,000 as opposed to drilling a new well somewhere for a million dollars, and then not having any additional property, I think is kind of a, kind of a brain-dead situation, I think this is a... I personally think this is a great choice. So what is the desire of council on this item?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign a commercial and investment real estate purchase and sale agreement for the property at 70 Red Road, Sunset, Washington, or as we call it, the old Tucker selling building.
And I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion by Council Beeler, second by Council Hart, and I'm not gonna try to read that whole thing back again. That was written to the record. Any debate on this item? During that, that's the court, be able to list one vote.
Council Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Borson?
Yes.
Council Beeler?
Yes.
Council Hicks?
Yes.
Council Farmer?
Yes.
Council Hart?
Yes.
Mayor, you have six CS votes.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, next is items from council members, mayor's appointments for boards and commissions, I have one. A couple of weeks ago, we met and discussed expanding our Sunset Community and Economic Development Commission by one member, and so we have that person here to be appointed this evening, and in discussion with other council members, it seems as if everyone is in agreement, so, um, do we have a form or something? Okay, I'm gonna read this letter into the record. All right, Mr. Deputy Mayor, council members, pursuant to Sunset Municipal Code, Chapter 2.50, I have appointed Lori Gardner to the Sunset Community and Economic Development Commission, subject to city council confirmation. This appointment is for a new term and expires on June 30, 2026, and meets the membership requirements of Chapter 2.50.160 SMC. I honor this appointment to you with my full confidence in the appointee's ability to faithfully discharge the duty of a member of the Sunset Community and Economic Development Commission. I will request confirmation of this appointment at the city council meeting scheduled tonight, Monday, August 22, 2022. All right, is there any objection?
No objection.
All right. Gardner, you stand appointed to this position.
Thank you.
This is a committee of very talented individuals, and I believe that you will fit right in, you've got a great deal to offer our community, so thank you for being willing to serve. We do have openings on our salary commission, anybody interested? If you know somebody who might be interested, our salary commission has been almost non-existent, has been shut down for quite some time. Our salary commission has been almost nonexistent, hasn't shown up for quite some time. Technically, they're supposed to meet once a year, and I don't know if you've met in all that time. So we certainly have openings for that as well. And how many positions are on that one? So two-thirds of that commission is vacant. If you're interested, please check out the city website or go into City Hall to be informed to apply for that position. And no, you don't have to be old to sign up for it. You can do that with your legal age. We think I'm not old enough to do that sort of thing. All right. Council requests to add a report. That'll be...
For Roger Brooks, I have actually put for Trevor to start tackling some of that, which I believe he will be doing the municipal board. So you will start seeing updates on that coming out as they start to be... Water tower, I still haven't gotten an answer from local neuralists. So I'm going to recommend that we go to the arts commission, call an arts commission meeting, and see what they would recommend as our next step. I think we need to go out for a SP or an ARQ if we aren't going to get someone local that wants to do it. Speed limit on YDH. When Councilor Succi is in session, I will be asking him to let you read this. We have put the large signs up. We've stamped the speed limit on the ground, and that's about all we can do. I sometimes wish we could trace the speed limit on Schoon where I frequently go, because I'm the same way with my sister there. I see people on Schoon going 65, and I see people on YDH going 20. So I'm not sure that it connects there, but it is real, I don't know. I don't know what to do. I know Al sometimes says that emphasis patrol on both of those roads, but you can't always catch the feeder because they're speeding and going before it. In the labor ordinance and code enforcement, you will see that there is reports here tonight from our code enforcement office. And it details what kind of problem areas that have been noticed, and a total and accumulated percent. And Trevor is here to answer any questions.
Council members, any questions? It does seem to me that there is some movement happening. It was easy when we are driving through town to go to work and see the same thing day after day. It's like that nothing is actually going on, and there's no effort being put into it at all. Then we see the list of numbers of events. We draft 42. WRTL about 61. Okay, so that's, things are actually happening if this may not be happening in a corner that you see every single day. So, and that is something too, if you have something that needs to be reported to the city, there is a spot on the website where you can do that. And I encourage citizens to do that. If there's something that you think is out of code, we certainly are within your rights to report that on the city website. Your name is not out there. You will not be retaliating against us. It is then in the city hands, and then it's irresponsible to follow along.
And, oh, the fireworks ordinance. Fire chief has begun to use his recommendations that will come before the committee that's going to meet. He did ask me if, as a whole, the council is looking for us to be more restrictive or less restrictive. His recommendation is that we would take a model after the city of Zilla, which has been working for them, where it is less restrictive, but they have to permit, and then there's a sign they don't clean at the rest. So I just wanted to kind of pull the council and see thoughts.
The biggest complaint that I get, and I complain too, is you can give everybody a permit, and they're all going to do it, and these poor dogs are running around. I've got a dog that hides underneath as soon as the first one goes, goes underneath the bed, and you won't see her till it's over. I know a lot of people with dogs. It just upsets them a lot. And there's always dogs running away on the Fourth of July, usually getting hit by cars. So just permitting it is not going to do it unless we have an area where they can go to, out of an R1 at least. My thoughts.
I would have, how are we going to enforce permits? Are we going to have people driving around? Being fireworks police, checking to see if somebody's got a permit to shoot fireworks off? I mean, if you're going to have a permit, you're going to have to have some type of a process to do something about it.
I mean, we know that. So as part of the committee, we would be working on that as fast as we're actually going to go. And it could be that it's where you're issued a permit, and you have to put it fairly visible so that when somebody tries to buy it, they believe it.
And then likewise, the amount of days we're going to allow fireworks.
Right now, it seems like they blow up for a full month.
They'll shoot them off.
At least in my opinion.
City of Granger also does permits for fireworks, and they have basically like a campaign signs with the numbers printed on, and they have to have that in the front lawn as they're using it.
Thinking that a map can also issue permits, although I don't think they have great big signs in the front yard. I think that the police officers just stay home and try not to get in the war zone and fall with smoke and everything. That's kind of dangerous out there, and I understand that. I personally believe that we should, we issued a ban on fireworks a number of years ago. I think the ban ought to remain in place personally. I think that the reason we put it in place was because of the lack of accountability by the citizens of the community to be careful with fireworks. Children getting burned, dogs getting scared, dogs not being taken care of. You know, because they do get scared and they run away, those sorts of things. And I just, I really do feel in my heart of hearts that we should continue the ban, and we should, in lieu of that, perhaps we do need to have a place in, like in Zilla, they have a, they usually have a place like our cemetery, which overlooks the highway there, where they had fireworks at one point or another. I just, I just can't see the permit situation really working to our advantage.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Ms. Ripley, do you have any comments?
I would like to have it banned, but I don't really see how we can control that. You know, we don't have enough police officers. By the time they get there, then, you know, you don't know who set off the fireworks. But it's a whole month thing, you know? I have a dog that is just terrified of the fireworks. And if you could count on just, you know, on July 4th, then you could deal with that. But it's, it's two weeks before and two weeks after. And that's where I, that's my problem. And so I am not, I like the Zilla one, but I used to live in Zilla, and it was, it was horrible. There was no control out there. You know, I'd take my kid out to this piece of plywood, and everybody else's fireworks would, would fall over and get you. And, and so, you know, unless somebody's controlling that, I don't really, I don't know what the answer is. There's just a lot of, I want to ban it and just be done with it, but I know that that doesn't happen.
Thank you, Ms. Ripley. For myself, I agree with my colleagues. I'd rather have it, excuse me, I'd rather have it banned, but I know that that hasn't been working well. But at the very least, I would like to limit it so that we're not listening to fireworks going off for an entire month. A week would be fine. The enthusiasm, I understand the enthusiasm. I love it when people are feeling patriotic, but I'm not certain this is patriotism-driven. I mean, it's because people like to make a lot of noise, and it's exciting to make things go boom. People talk about their pets. That is a concern. I am concerned about fire safety. When I was a young, early married man, my neighbor's truck was caught on fire. The carport was burned down because the kids from across the street were not being careful with the fireworks. And that was the reason the ban was put in place, not that specific incident, but things like that were going on. So I think we need to be real careful how we put this together. Become a specific area where they're allowed to do this, where they have to have a sign displayed in the yard very clearly for everyone to see. If they don't have it, then there's a good sign for it. Something along those lines. I don't want it to be a lot more work for our police department. But yeah, there's a lot of input from us, and council members, and I'm sure citizens in this community are going to have even more opinions on this, so.
Since I've been here, like came out of the service, we've had a ban. But every year, I watch a great display as I come home from work in Sunny Side. So the ban isn't working. No one's following it. No one's listening to it. Why not permit it? And then we can at least monitor it better that way.
What's your take, sir? Further comments on this item?
I may. One of the things that I think that the, the reason that the ban doesn't work is because we don't enforce it. It's like anything else. Code enforcement laws don't get recognized because maybe they're not being enforced. The same with yard sales. You get yourself a yard sale permit. You're supposed to. You're supposed to call in. You're supposed to file for it. You're supposed to print it off at home. That's not working really very well either. I haven't had two yard sales in the last couple of weeks. I haven't been able to print out a single permit because it's not been permitted at times. But I never got an okay that it was okay for me to do yard sale permits. So I'm just saying, putting bans on things only work if we enforce them. And even if we do put signs out there and ask for permits and things, can we really count on our citizens to purchase those permits? And then what, how are we going to then in fact enforce that? So there are a lot of questions to ask about this, to consider. I agree with you all, but there's, I don't know what the real answer is here.
Does that give you any guidance at all?
Very much.
All right. Other reports, announcements, and/or questions by council. Council members.
Yeah, one just, we just got done talking about it, the yard sales. The amount of yard sale signs that are out is obscene. The amount of yard sale signs that are left out is even more obscene. Within a six-block area of my business, I counted nine yard sale signs on sidewalks. We need, and it's easy on a lot of these to check them out because their address is on it, you know? So why, we need to have some kind of enforcement. What we're doing here is completely unregulated. You might have to have a permit. Expermits, you know, if we're going to have a permit, then we better have some enforcement procedure for the permit. We need to have somebody out driving around, checking out yard sales, to see if they got a permit and see if their sign is legal, in a legal spot. And then day after, I guess it'd be just one day after if you considered yard sales on Sunday, but we're not, I'm embarrassed when they have somebody come into town and drive by and can't even walk down a sidewalk because they had to dodge the yard sale signs.
Okay. Just checking to see if there's anybody else standing by anything. I did want to say that, I'm not trying to criticize the system. I'm just saying something so that maybe we can, in council, make a little, maybe somebody just needs to explain things. No, because I don't always get those things right. Anyway, I did, this past weekend, Councilor Ripley and I attended the Association of Washington City Budgeting and Finance Workshops in Leavenworth. It was a day and a half of intense, talking, listening to and learning about the different kinds of regulations that are coming forth on some of the different ways that we budget, how we budget, some new things about equity budgeting, which I'm still a little confused on. But it has a good way, good place in our city. There was also lots of information from the Office of the State Auditors, and they're always available. I know that we're in close contact with them, and they like that very much for us to be in close contact with them whenever we have questions. And I know that our City Hall people do that frequently. There was some conversation a little bit about the ARCA monies and how that was probably going to be a part of our ongoing budgeting reviews and so forth. And the big thing there was when they were talking about ARCA funds and also about the other kinds of funds that we get, federal funds that we get from the federal folks. Being sure to dot our i's and cross all of our t's and make sure we read all of the questions and then read them again to make sure we absolutely understand them. Because as you all know, anybody who does grants and that sort of thing, that's usually where we get into trouble when we're doing our reporting, because we haven't read that one last sentence quite right, and we'll mess this up. But it was very good. I think Ms. Ripley and myself, we learned a lot. We got to meet a lot of new people. In fact, it was very exciting to get to sit next to the city administrator of Leavenworth, Selby, who happens to be a former coworker of Mr. Trevor over here, Mr. Martin. And so he was very, very helpful, even though he hasn't been in Leavenworth for very long. He was very good pointing out places for us to get food and buy t-shirts and do a little tourism while we were on our way out of town. But it was all, it was really good. I know that we're having our budget workshop this weekend, and I can share some of the council at that time. We have this pile of information to share, so. But it was very good, and I appreciate the council and the city allowing us to go to that, to share this information. Like I said, it's always a treat to get to go and listen to people who are experts in this particular business of budgeting, city budgets. And talking about how to be flexible, how to be remember that it's a living document, and that sometimes we may want them, but maybe we can only just get a little investment. So it was a good workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ripley. Anyone else? I've got a couple. It was kind of a busy week for me this past week, and I just want to share some of what that was going on. First of all, I want to thank our City Manager, Andrew Staff, with the excellent organization that they did with our guests from San Cana, Tana, Luisa, Peque, El Salvador. It was an amazing visit. I enjoyed myself immensely. I have been in almost constant contact with the mayor, Mr. Makhia, since then, and he had a really amazing time as well. On Wednesday, he spent a lot of time moving around the city, and I'll let him talk about that a little bit more. And Thursday morning, he and I met for breakfast and coffee, and he just shared that he was very excited about what he saw. He's looking forward to our visits there. So the Sister City program is moving forward, and I think it's kind of exciting. It's an opportunity to share and learn and be able to benefit to another community that does not have some of the opportunities that we have. But also, we've got something that we can gain from that, and so I think it's great for us to be able to take advantage of that. We had a public safety meeting last week, Monday, and it was a long meeting. It went for a long time. Our police chief and crime analyst put together a very exhaustive report, helped us understand some of the things that they're doing. He made one comment in there that I think was very, very important and indicative of the direction that he wants to go. He wants to go from being a reactive police department to one that is proactive. In other words, not reacting to crime, seeing how things are going and moving there to stop it before it gets any worse. And that's the way we need to be looking here, and things like, we've had this huge growth. Dr. Chivas was already reporting on that this evening, and we've got other reports, things that are going on. And to try to get ahead of these guys is a challenge. We've got a police department that's looking for manpower, and yet they are still working in critical amounts of overtime to try to get this thing under control. Also, looking for other solutions to try to limit some of our overtime and give our officers a bit of a rest. So we've got different ideas that are out there that he's looking into. So I want to commend him on that. We have the report from Mr. Martin and planning and code enforcement and all the work that he's doing. And so for the police department and code enforcement to be working together on these things is, I think, showing some good results. I think showing some good results. Unfortunately, it's not the results that we see all the time. Just like the code enforcement issues where it's not happening on the corner. You may be driving by every day. It is happening. And so take things one step at a time. This morning I saw our chief and other officers out over by the Burger King, Allen Road, One Eden Road corner doing a bunch of work. He was out there talking to people like, I saw our police department doing his job. They were out emphasizing things. So they're doing it. And that was, that was encouraging. So it doesn't mean that we're not open to ideas. So if you've got, you know, things that we can do better. Um, National Night Out tomorrow night is another one. I encourage council members to, uh, participate. It's over in the Ojo area. Again, I'm pretty sure Liz is going to give us more information on that. But I've had the privilege of being able to go to all of them so far and it's a great opportunity to meet members of this community. There's a lot of people that don't know who we are and we're just this mysterious body of people that they're not really sure what we do and they're not really sure that we care at all about them. So it's really good to be able to be there. And then, because Lori Gardner is here, I want to thank Destination Sunny Side and all the work that they did for our farmers market and food court this summer. Last Friday was the last of the season. Excuse me. And I was able to go. It was a wonderful time. The weather was quite nice by the time I was able to get there. The music was good, the food was good. And I think it is something that a lot of people wanted. Attendance was down this year and there's a number of factors that contribute to that. But I still think it is a very positive event for our city and it needs to continue, which means that they may need more volunteers. So we need to be talking to people about perhaps getting involved in it. So keep that in mind and that's all I've got to say. Next item is upcoming council meetings. Nancy Mender.
Well, as you mentioned, uh, Mayor, there is a meeting tomorrow for National Night Out at the Ojo Development on Allen Road. This is a neighborhood meeting. We do encourage people to come if they feel they're satisfied about, but we are trying to target that neighborhood. So we want those neighbors to know each other and for them, we believe fire department and staff that go. Um, so if there is somebody that in their heart says, I feel like I really need to be there, please show up. You're invited. So we are trying to encourage that neighborhood to just really get involved with each other and start to know each other. Saturday, August 27th, there will be a special meeting at the community center. This is a budget retreat. Uh, public is welcome to come and listen, uh, but there is not a public comment section. Tuesday, September 6th, 2022 will be the workshop and we're gathering for that.
Yeah, it's Saturday morning to start. Can I have a good start time for everyone? No objections. Here we go. Nobody wants to be there at 6:00?
No. Five o'clock is early.
All right. Items from department yet. Nancy Mender.
And I want to start with Jameson, who is, um, online.
I am excited to see you guys at the, um, Saturday Budget Workshop. That will be excellent and, um, we'll have a lot of discussion about staffing and salaries. Um, so that'll be good. So be open-minded and that is all I have to report.
And Randy Chezalard.
Um, I think that, Mr. Mayor, I just discussed a question of what I was going to say, which is fine. I really appreciate that. Uh, I, I just want to reiterate that our, our staff continue to work on that neighborhood's doing same things, doing block crews. Uh, we get out on foot and we are walking blocks and addressing things and rousting, uh, a lot of things right now. There's an awful lot of activity in the city. Um, uh, our precision policing model has been doing the same thing. That makes certainly create arrests, uh, much needed arrests, uh, that has benefited the city and will benefit the, uh, the city. Uh, the FBI was also interested and was here, uh, helping us with that, uh, with those arrests, uh, last week. So it's, uh, we are very focused in doing what we are doing and trying to reduce this, uh, crime as much as we can as fast as we can. Our folks are tired. They can work extremely long overtime and they are burnt. They're tired. So I'm also trying to find a way in order to relieve some of the calls to them and relieve some time and give them some time away from here, uh, which is much needed and, uh, and let them recharge their batteries, so to speak, and get right back at it. So, uh, I've been balancing that for us right now. Again, at the, uh, the National Night Out first for, you know, at the, uh, Ojo will be a lot of fun. It'll be good time. I've been to all of them as well and, uh, uh, getting my share of hamburgers and hot dogs, which is great. Uh, so, but it has been fun. It has been fun. It's been, uh, good for the neighborhoods, I think. So hope to see you there.
And Alan, did you want to let them know about the flock? Karen?
Uh, yes. So technology has been one of the things that has been at the forefront of our minds and also part of our crime reduction efforts. And flock is a automatic license plate reading system, but it's also a system that, uh, does record what you feed it and it's a, um, it's, it's quite, uh, it's a communicator. So it talks to other cities or county or whoever has lock system in, in place. They talk to each other. Um, and so I have put out basically a, uh, word to, uh, to flock themselves saying, I can't wait anymore for the, for the, uh, the grant funding to come through and start doing something immediately if I can. Uh, they introduced a pilot program to us to implement some of these without costing us. And so hopefully by September 30th, I'll, I'll more about the grant funding, but, uh, we need something in place before then if we can get it. And, uh, getting technology right now is difficult, uh, for anybody. It's, you know, they're pushing it down the road. Some things here, you know, a lot of cameras are probably, they are up to 12, uh, 16, 18 months out before you get them. So it, it's a long way down. Um, we, that is looking pretty positive for us right now in hopes that we're able to get, uh, at least some of these in place and get them operating for us and benefit the city.
As the mayor pointed out before, uh, a little bit earlier, I do have July 23rd to August 18th for reinforcements, uh, for you right now. Um, we have, we have been pretty busy. Uh, I know that the two code enforcement officers have been really looking at vacancies and abandoned vehicles, um, quite a lot recently. Uh, we've been fortunate enough to be able to work with some, um, poor volunteers and some, uh, people who are school volunteers. So we do have a little bit of extra help some mornings during the week, which has been really, really good for painting up graffiti, uh, the different signs. Uh, we've been able to stay on that last week. I know Dave and one of the other volunteers, they spent, uh, just a good morning painting up political signs. Those are posted in Lightwood Way and just all over the place. They've flown over and do all kinds of things during the election season. Um, but I know that they spent some time doing that last week. Yeah, next, next city council meeting, I will be having quite a few code enforcement changes that we discuss at our public safety meetings that have to do with a lot of the changes I've been talking about over the last two months that have to do with, um, abandonment procedures and, um, noticing and mitigating problem properties. So you'll be seeing those for you at the next city council meeting. I'm really excited to get those going. Uh, I just got the hearing examiner agreement in place today, so I'm pretty excited about that as well to get things in the vehicles. Move, move that a little bit faster, pay for these issues. Um, other than that, I don't have too many things to report.
Questions or comments?
Only, only the comments. Okay. Good work. And keep us updated. Don't, 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 just keep us updated.
So I was, um, going to comment on the, um, El Salvador visit on Wednesday. Um, many of you know and some of you might not and that I was on a conference on vacation the week before that, um, came in to work on Monday and basically pulled that whole event off that, like, in two days. So it was very much, um, not last minute because I kind of already knew what we were trying to do, but I did want to, um, say thank you to Pete, the manager at Johnson Foods. Um, we were trying to get a tour of Ostrum's and had no idea what would later be in the press with them. So they weren't returning our phone calls. And I called Johnson Foods and they arranged that tour within hours. I mean, they just said, yeah, we'll do it. And, um, if you go on Facebook, you can see our actual tour. Um, that is the Sister City mayor. They used to sell their hat, not the cowboy hat, but the baseball cap. Um, we got to see running lines of cherries. Um, I thought it was really interesting. Some of the people in our group did not know that marshino cherries are bleached white. And then food coloring and additives are intended to make them red. And we tasted one of those white cherries and they have absolutely no taste. They don't even taste like bleach. They just taste like they're eating nothing. And then no later. Um, it was pretty cool though when we got into this cold storage. They had, um, barrels of the bleached cherries ready to go to El Salvador. Those are them right there. Go back to El Turkey. So those barrels, love. Those right there are getting ready to go to El Salvador for finished processing. So we thought that was really cool. Um, and then he, he spent so much time with us, um, took us to where they can remain with vinegar, um, where they have their asparagus line that actually goes to Costco. So we're building jobs in other cities here in our own city that, you know, really this is educational for me as well. Learned a lot. Um, they also do red peppers. And so they gave them some stuff to take home to try and then they took it to their pepper fields over by the airport. And we got to pick peppers right off the vine and taste them. I recommend the halfway ripe ones. The really ripe ones were hot, hot, hot. And then, um, after this, we went to the airport and they got to take some pictures with a plane that was on the, on the field. Um, and they were excited that, you know, there is an airport. We visited the port offices. We visited the high school and the stadium. Um, I've never walked so much in Sunny Side in my entire life. I, that's actually after the high school, I had to go home and get different shoes on because my, between my toes had rubbed so bad I couldn't hardly stand. But very proud to have a beautiful stadium to show them and beautiful schools. Um, we just had such an amazing time with them. And they're so excited. We, there's no pictures of it here, but when we toured the fire department, our fire department has SBVA equipment. It is sitting in, in basically a storage. It's 10 years past due. We can no longer use it. They're not allowed to. So they were so excited that maybe we could put some of those on a container and send them. They don't have a fire engine pretty much in their city. If something burns, it just burns. So we're looking at the 1983 fire engine that we have that we also can't use in service, seeing if we can get it, um, to go to El Salvador. So I really, really encourage people to think about all of our blessings here. We have so much. And now we have a sister city that we can give some things to that we can't use and maybe it will be good for them. We're hoping that we can go down, um, sometime in November and as part of our visit to them, we'll do some training to help them and have some of our firefighters actually participate in that. We also just found out, um, this last week that we received a grant, um, an amount of $50,000, well, $49,300 to be exact, from TMS for a new turnout here. Now we're able to take some of our money and put it with it and that grant and buy all new turnout here for our group and then hand me down the turnout here that we have to El Salvador. So this partnership, it feels good and it, it is good. It's good for us culturally to be more international and have somebody that we can look out for as a sister city. And then they're really interested in getting with some of our farmers to begin an H2A program for their city. Um, Johnson Foods, again, Pete was all over it, said, let's do it. And we also had the Don Lindy there. He's willing to help us, um, get that program going, which ultimately helps Sunny Side because we get someone that comes here and does work that a lot of us are not willing to do anymore. Um, they get an income. They spend their money here and we benefit. So it's, it's a win for, for both cities. So I really wanted to say thank you to everybody that participated and, um, you know, staff was wonderful and, and it was just, it was a great, great thing. Again, um, thanks, everybody. Because it took all of us kind of pulling rocks at last minute. And then, um, as far as the property purchase tonight, thank you very much for letting me put that on last minute. Um, our real estate person is Randy Pecker. I go to the person that knows the most about the property, right? And he was in, um, they, or not, he was in, they on vacation and they came back and got sick. So that's why this kind of came up last minute. But we have been negotiating this for a few months. So I wanted to let citizens know, I think this is going to be something for our city and program. Um, other things that I want to report, we are working really hard this week to make sure that the budget retreat has all the elements for you to start thinking about how we want our budget to go. Um, and I'm sure citizens out there, you may have ideas. If you do, please contact the person that you know on council or send me an email and we'll make sure and get those items on there. We want this budget process to be as inclusive as we can be, but also very productive. Um, we, we want to do some long-term plans. Um, we, we kind of tend to be reactive here in Sunny Side instead of proactive. So we're trying to make decisions that will impact things in the long term and not just think, oh, I've got to put this fire out here and if I put that fire out here. So, uh, again, we're, we're hiring for grant writer. If anybody is looking for a top as a grant writer, um, that position is still on our website. And we're looking at, and during the cycle,